...your patience this evening as we concluded a training session right before this. All the persons are present, thank you all for being here. Item number three on our agenda this evening is the Pledge of Allegiance followed by a silent prayer and in lieu of invocation invites you to please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Amen. Item four on our agenda this evening. For the administration of the Olds. Okay, so raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Justin Lewis.
Having been duly selected.
Having been duly selected.
To serve as a firefighter.
Serve as a firefighter.
For the fire department.
For the fire department.
Of the city of Wisconsin Rapids.
Of the city of Wisconsin Rapids.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
Do hereby here solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of.
The Constitution of.
The United States.
The United States.
And of the state of Wisconsin.
And of the state of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully.
And will faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of said office.
Of said office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Thank you very much.
It's not working. Don't spam it, don't spam it. It'll lock you out. Is the red light appearing?
When you hit the confirm button? Is the red light on?
Okay, hang on.
Throughout the summer. They're also. Memorial or in honor of individuals in our community. Beautification Council is also participating in a spring clean neighborhood cleanup event with Current which is happening this weekend, May 20th from 10:00 to noon. That group is checking in at Sportsman's Pub and cleaning up locations around town. Check out the Current and City's Facebook page for a link to register for the Young Professionals Spring Clean Group being hosted this weekend. On the Aquatic Park Development at the Wisconsin Rapids Recreational Center at Winter, we've received a final theming package which we'll be sharing with the community and prospective donors. This nearly completes the final design work that was under contract and we expect to have the complete final design ready for construction when fundraising allows. We're also considering additional events to raise awareness of this milestone. On downtown developments, a senior housing project that's been proposed for the parking lot at Centralia proceeds with continued refinements on the site plan and discussions with the neighboring property owners being the VA, the YMCA, and others. On the riverfront, construction began on May 7th. The project starts with sidewalk and trail connections under the Expressway Bridge and through Demet's Park. Critical bank stabilization also begins in this area and cost estimates and design will be complete on the next phase in early June for sharing with everyone. Our new city website launched just over a week ago, so if you haven't had a chance yet, check it out. Feedback should be directed to IT as tweaks are still being made. Also, put a plug in to search the city of Wisconsin Rapids on your smartphone app store to download the smartphone app which you can report ordinance violations such as parked vehicles, long grass, etc. to the city's ordinance control officer. In the category of attended, hosted, or participated, we had a YP panel for Young Professionals Week in Wisconsin in which Wisconsin Rapids participated and we hosted a panel on all the investments that are happening, public, private, and philanthropic in our community. Participated with the mayors of Rhinelander and Merrill on the Wisconsin Public Radio Route 51 a couple of weeks ago on a show talking about leadership in the Wisconsin River Valley. Hosted a farm-to-school event at Lincoln High School on aquaponics, so if you're interested in aquaponics and alternative methods of growing produce, they're going to be selling the lettuce that they're growing in the classroom back to the school lunch program. It's a pretty cool method of entrepreneurship and education. Last Thursday, we hosted the Regional Economic Growth Summit and Airport Groundbreaking. Thanks to Alder Person Kubashak and Graff for attending that and taking time out of your day to learn about many of the things happening in our region. Also participated in the Chris Race Memorial. Unfortunately, he was tragically taken from his community a number of weeks ago and so we hosted a memorial last week which many community members showed up for that occasion. We, the Public Works Director and I attended an Arbor Day presentation at Washington School where we spoke to fourth graders. I can't remember exactly the entire fourth grade student population at Washington to talk about Arbor Day and the benefits of having a tree, urban tree, and urban forestry program in the city which we're proud to have. And then last night, we hosted a Girl Scout troop here in the council chambers to talk about city government and they also did a tour of the police department. Ribbon cutting since our last meeting, Door 212 just down the street and Happy Paw's Pet Grooming on the corner of Lincoln and East Grand Avenue also commemorated their reopening at that location. For May proclamations issued, one on May 14th recognizing Mung Law Vets Week in Wisconsin and this week, actually this coming week, Public Works Week, May 20th through 26th. So want to recognize those proclamations. And that concludes my report. Catch my radio show tomorrow on WFHR at 10:00 AM taking calls from listeners as well as anybody else that wishes to call in. That concludes my report. Move on to item number eight which is my appointments to various committees, commissions, and boards, attachment number three in your packets. Pretty short one this month. We actually had a, the last agenda, there was an error and we were correcting that issue where actually Alder Person Lee Graff is my appointment to the Parks and Recreation Commission. It was not, actually Alder Person Coath was the previously appointed by the council. So we're correcting that so officially Lee Graff can be appointed. With that, I submit that for your consideration.
I make motion to approve Lee Graff as written in your appointment sheet.
Motion to approve by Kubashak, is there a second by Coath? Any discussion? Seeing no requests to speak, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, eight i's, zero n's.
Thank you. Item A, sorry, 9A, under New Businesses, consider a resolution providing for the sale of approximately $2,135,000 general obligation promissory notes, Series 2018A. See the resolution, attachment number four. Tim, did you have anything you want to mention on that item?
Sure, this is just a resolution that is. For the sale of the notes. That'll include completing an official statement, doing a rating call with Moody's or Rating Agency, and also getting a legal opinion from our bond counsel and then we would set the date for the sale of the notes at the June council meeting. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Alder Person, what are your wishes regarding that item? Alder Person Graff, you're first.
I do have a question. I do have a question, Tim, and I apologize for not having the opportunity to meet with you on this, but there was some, just to be clear, there was some issues I had with downloading the documentation that we needed for tonight's meeting, so I had to pick up a written copy last night at 4:00. So I apologize, but under the proposed language, we have bike path projects, street improvement projects, sidewalk projects, park projects, storm and library improvements, but that's all I have. So I don't have any background information on exactly what these projects are and as I alluded to earlier, if I'm not clear on what these projects are, I can't vote in the affirmative for it because I don't know the information.
As far as like, just I can give you a description of the projects. First, the street construction, we have High Street, 7th Avenue North to 10th Avenue North. We have High Street, 12th Avenue North to 17th Avenue North and Van Buren, 8th Avenue North to 10th Avenue North. And that's for the street construction on those locations, also includes the storm sewer on High Street, 7th Avenue North to 10th Avenue North. The sidewalk is for $143,000. It's sidewalk, 10th Street South, 330 feet north of Wood Avenue to Grove Avenue. And then for, we have the Phase 1 of the East River Bank Bike Path of which the mayor alluded to that we began construction and we awarded the contract on that at the March Council. And then we have the McMillan Library lower restroom renovation. So those are the projects that are being financed with this debt issue.
And so as a point of clarification, the projects were approved over the course of a number of actions by the council and this is the financing for the note issue? Very good. Thank you. We lost our wonderful system here tonight. Are there any other requests to speak? If you could just give me a sign so I can, or I could entertain a motion as well, I should say. Okay, we're back. I'd entertain a motion on the item.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution providing for the sale of approximately $2,135,000 general obligatory promissory notes, Series 2018A.
A motion by Zerflu is our second, second by Kellogg. Move into discussion. Are there any further requests to speak? Seeing none, the motion is to approve, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, eight i's, zero n's.
Item nine, New Business, item B, first reading of an ordinance amending Section 25.17, parent 4 of the municipal code, changing the fine amount for possession of drug paraphernalia from $500 to $1,500. Clerks note this item was referred to the common council by Alder Person Coath at the April 17th meeting, see the ordinance attachment number five. And I will read the ordinance. Sorry, did you want to read the ordinance? I guess. The ordinance reads, "A general ordinance of the city of Wisconsin Rapids amending Section 25.17, parent 4 of the municipal code regarding increasing the maximum fine amount for possession of drug paraphernalia. Now therefore, the common council of the city of Wisconsin Rapids does ordain as follows: Section 1, Section 25.17, parent 4 of the municipal code is hereby amended to read as follows: Possession of drug paraphernalia. No person may use or possess with the sole intent to use drug paraphernalia to plant, propagate, cultivate, grow, harvest, manufacture, compound, convert, produce, process, prepare, test, analyze, pack, repack, store, contain, conceal, inject, ingest, inhale, or otherwise introduce into the human body a controlled substance in violation of this chapter. Any person who violates section may not be fined for more than $1,500. Any person changed to read $1,500. Any person who violates section who is under age of 18 is subdisposition under Section 48.344 of the Wisconsin statutes." Alder Person Coath, you're first.
Thank you, Mayor. Before we make a motion on this, I did want to speak about this with a referral and explain this to the council and to the public at large. Many residents have noticed a negative impact that drugs have made in our community. Many residents do not want drugs in our community. Residents have expressed concerns about safety, safety of their children, and overall safety of being able to go to businesses or use facilities like parks in the city of Wisconsin Rapids. In my opinion, I do believe we have a drug problem in our community. If you listen to just about any news source, you'll hear about the nationwide problem known as the opioid epidemic. My intention of asking for the revision of Wisconsin Rapids Municipal Statute 25.17 is to show and start making a statement that the city of Wisconsin Rapids has a zero tolerance for drugs, that we, the city of Wisconsin Rapids, will not welcome drugs into our community. Currently, the maximum fine for possession of drug paraphernalia per the municipal ordinance is up to $500. I'm proposing that we raise the maximum fine up to $1,500. I believe this will give our police and municipal court a tool to start cracking down on chronic drug users in our community. There is a state statute regarding drug paraphernalia. A municipal statute cannot be less restrictive than the state or less harsh, but we can go beyond what the state would have. And right now, I believe under the state statute, it is a $500 fine and 15 days imprisonment. Just for reference, is pretty much outlined in the packet of 2517, but this does not apply to syringes because those are considered a medical device, but it does apply to the other items that are used for, common with drug paraphernalia.
Any further, Alder Person Zerflu, you're next.
So the fines tripling and I definitely echo Alder Person Coath's feelings about wanting to send a message about drug use. Now, being a law enforcement officer for about 14 years now, we already have the discretion. We can write a ticket, Wood County also has a drug paraphernalia ordinance, or we can charge them under the state statute. And I believe the maximum penalty is actually nine months in jail. I'd have to double check. So I just worry maybe that you're taking a little bit of discretion away from the officers. I'd be curious to know what the police chief thinks about the issue, but harder drugs are what people call.
Harder drugs.
Are of course a completely different animal, but I just wonder about, you know, 18-year-old kid caught with a marijuana pipe, is this excessive? You know, maybe it's not. I don't know. $1,500 just seems high when you already have that state charge option, so that's really all I wanted to say. I don't know if you want to say anything on the issue, chief, or not, but thank you.
In regards to this request by Alderman Coath, we, at the police department, we have concerns of the amount of the fine with a tripling to $1,500 that these $1,500 tickets or ordinance violations are going to result in unpaid fines which are going to result in warrants. The more warrants we have out there, the more people we're going to have in the jail. I can't speak for the Sheriff's Department on overcrowding in the jail and things of that nature, but that is a concern at our end as far as the $1,500 fine goes. Of course, we do have the state statute which is a lesser fine already, but that is our main concern is the amount and the amount of unpaid fines that are going to be out there. We're seeing unpaid fines as it is with the $500.
Thank you, Alder Person Blazer, you're next.
I've been thinking about this one today, but I think if the city attorney can correct me, we could set that at $10,000. It doesn't matter because it says not more than $1,500. So it's the judge that sets the deposit amount for this violation and not city council. So, and right now, the judge doesn't even have it set at 500. So really, the number is arbitrary, is the ending number. If you want to actually have a fine that has an amount, you start with $500 to $1,500. But right now, it's 0 to 1,500, or 0 to 500. And if we change it 0 to 1,500, still it's up to the judge whatever he wants to set that amount. So it really isn't going to affect anything by passing this ordinance tonight unless we start not at 0 but at a different number. Correct? Maybe?
Right, because there is no minimums and I'm not sure under the bail and bond schedule what this is at, what you would actually write a ticket for at the present time for this. Probably might be $50 or $100 with costs.
Plus costs, yeah.
Might be a couple hundred dollars, so I'm not sure.
So unfortunately, yeah.
But you're correct.
So yeah, so thinking about it, that $1,500 really isn't going to do anything at this point because it's going to be up to the judge unless he started at a different number instead of 0.
Thank you, Alder Person Kellogg, you're next.
Actually, I agree with Alderman Blazer. It's the same idea. I mean, if you have a chronic situation and a person's continually being arrested for the same situation or at a location, well, maybe they'll be fining $1,500, but, and I agree that you might have a unique situation where that would be an excessive fine, but I would have it to be the discretion of the judge and the attorneys to determine what that is. But I do not want someone who's selling the drugs or is a constant problem to get by with a low fine when they should be fined $1,500. So it's that discretion and I agree with Shane on that one.
Alder Person Kenna, you're next.
Yeah, these people aren't paying the fines already, so if they're in this type of situation where they're an addict and they're consistently getting caught, they will not have the money to pay these fines anyways and they're just going to fill up jails, I mean, to be honest here. So I don't see any reason to raise the fine. I think there's a better way to go around this and address this issue. I think $500 at this point, my thought would be that's enough where the people who are doing this can pay their fine off and then better their problems. So I would not be in favor of raising it, especially when I think right now, as Chief Buffalo said, they're not being paid currently, so that's all I got.
Alder Person Blazer, you're next.
I guess I disagree. I could care less if they're paying them or not because that's why we have the system in place where they can spend time in jail. I don't think we should as a body not set a fine based on whether or not people are paying them. That's not the message I care to send, but if they need to spend time in jail, they can spend time in jail to pay it off.
Alder Person Zerflu, you're next.
I want to correct myself. I did double check. Alder Person Coath was right. 30 days imprisonment is the max by statute, except for methamphetamine would be a Class H felony. But when you write a ticket, you know, you have, you write the ticket, you print it off on tracks unless there's a step system involved involving subsequent offenses, which I definitely would support increasing fines for subsequent offenses. Saying that it's up to the judge to tell someone what they're going to pay requires that person plead not guilty and everything and have their day in court, which everyone's entitled to, but the reality is not everyone does that. And so I support an increase as long as we're not doing it with the intent to incarcerate people. I don't think that's the city government's job and, you know, we obviously can't pass criminal law, but I would like, I would like to see, rather than just saying the maximum penalty is something, have, I would hope Alder Person Coath would agree, maybe this was his attention, but have a, have the ordinance explain, you know, first offense is this much, maybe, you know, second offense, a fine will not be less than this because those are the, those are people that are real problems, like Alder Person Coath said, is the subsequent offenders. So I don't know if I can make a motion to maybe even have a special council committee cover this? Is that something that can even be done or is it not necessary?
Well, you're right, you don't have a legislative committee anymore, so that's why most of these ordinances are going right to council. You could make a motion to amend the ordinance at this time. I guess as long as it's not a substantial amendment, I would still count this as the first reading unless it's unanimous, it's going to come back next month anyways, so.
Well, I do want to, you know, point out the fact this came up in December and it just kind of, I don't know if it was forgotten about or whatever the reason was, but if we're going to triple a fine, I'd like maybe a little more discussion on it, but I'm not going to make a motion one way or the other at this time.
Alder Person Coath, you're next.
Just want to speak to some of the points that we think that tripling the fine isn't going to work. I very much agree with Alder Person Blazer that we need laws and we put laws into effect for a reason. I worked in jail for about two years here in Wood County. It's the same people that are always coming back on drugs. They say they need help, they say they need help. They go through Wood County Unified Services to get help, they get released from jail, they're back on drugs. They go to a CBRF housing facility, they go through there, they either don't complete it or when they get out, they're back on drugs. They sit their time in jail, they sit their sentence, they get silvered, they leave, they go out, they're back on drugs. These people accumulate fines, they go to court, they're backing up the court system. If the only hammer we have to start hitting them with is through a municipal ordinance of saying, "The best we can do is start taking more money from you to leave, get out of our town, get rid of your drugs, we don't want it here, we need to start exploring something because the citizens of this community are demanding that something gets done about the drug problem that's in our community." People are sick of it. People are sick of seeing it. There was a narcotics detective that used to work for our PD, he now works for DCI. He made an arrest in the McDonald's parking lot at 3:00 in the afternoon, subsequently walking by a car, watching two people shoot up heroin. McDonald's, a place where parents take their kids. Is this what we want in our community? I understand that as a council, we cannot set criminal law and the only thing we can go for is to increase a fine. So let's do something rather than do nothing. Let's start sending a message that Wisconsin Rapids will not be home to drug users, period.
Alder Person Kenna, you're next. Alderman Kellag, you're next.
This issue is actually really personal to me, because I've lost family over it. Um, I, I don't, I don't think increasing the fine is going to cure the problem, it's just, it's not going to happen. Um, it's, it's a broad ordinance, which means that an eighteen-year-old who gets caught with some marijuana paraphernalia, which is a common occurrence, um, could get fined fifteen hundred dollars, and I, I just think that that is just way too broad, and I, we, we do have a drug, drug problem, but I, I don't think raising the fines is going to, going to help it, so. I mean, just keep that in mind, is that there's other things that go behind why these people are doing these, and if you take more money from them, are they going to stop using? I don't think so, but.
Alderman Zerflu, you're next.
I just don't believe a, a jail is a place for someone to get any kind of help, I don't think there's any of us that think that is. Um, and again, you are not going to write someone a drug paraphernalia citation if they are a habitual drug user, you are going to charge them with state statute. That's a way more appropriate way to handle that. The, a drug paraphernalia citation, my experience, has used, is used for very minor offenses, attempt to correct behavior, right? That's, that's all, that's what an ordinance is for, try to gain compliance, try not to let them, you know, use drugs, but, you know, you have the state statute, I just don't understand why we need a fifteen hundred dollar fine. You know, can a, can a seventeen-year-old be issued a citation for this? The statute said, uh, the ordinance said eighteen, I thought, but, but, I mean, you can, even seventeen, you can charge them under state statute also, so, I'm, I'm just not convinced sitting more time in jail is going to help anybody, but.
Alderman Reom, you're next.
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, I agree with that. Um, rehabilitation does not pl- take place in jail if somebody's in for thirty days or whatever, supposedly, um, getting dry, they're not getting dry. Uh, it takes more than that, and it takes a lot longer than that, and it takes a different program than that to, to, uh, rehabilitate people. And I, I, I have never, personally, never have believed in that if you keep raising the fines, that that's going to deter people from doing something. And, and in this case, with drugs, you actually, more than likely, the person's going to become involved in theft, if they're not, and other things to help pay for those fines. I mean, we could set the fine at whatever, whatever we can legally, but if somebody can't pay it, they won't, but if they want to, and they're, they're stealing from their parents, they're stealing from their brothers, they're stealing from their sisters, all the way down through the line, it ain't that, that, they're just knocking over a gas station to get some money. I mean, this is a serious problem, I'm not making light of it, but, uh, to raise, just to raise the fine, I don't feel that that, that that's the answer. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Coath, you're next.
Thank you, Your Honor. Two things, and then I'm going to give it a rest. Number one, I would agree with Alderman Zerflu, that if the council wishes to explore stepped fines for first, second, third offense, I would be agreeable to that, just something's better than nothing. Secondly, I would remind the council, for those that were here three years ago, this council did pass a social hosting ordinance, which, if you remember, was an ordinance that is a one thousand dollar fine for an adult to give a minor a can of beer, a thousand bucks for a beer. And I don't think there was any debate over if that was out of line or not.
Alderman Blazer, you're next.
I'll give it a rest also. Um, I'm in favor of, uh, the step process. You know, we do it with everything else from OWI to other offenses, um, but, you know, when I have drugs in this community, I think I'd like to see a message that if you want to do drugs, go somewhere else. As long as it's basic economics, as long as there's a supply, somebody, or, as long as there's a demand, somebody's going to sell it. Let's, uh, send a message that maybe, go somewhere else, it's going to happen, but I'd rather not see it happen here, if possible.
Alderman Kellag?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, back to economics, this is approximately two to three months' rent of what these addicts might be paying, um, and it's, it's a, it's a problem that I would, I would hate to see people who are trying to get better and slip up, um, get caught up with this fine that's tripled and fall back behind. Um, I mean, there, there's a problem here, but there's got to be another way to approach it, and, like Zerflu said, under state statute, they already have that authority already. I just don't think it's the, um, responsibility of the council to take it and triple a fine that could affect a lot of people and set their lives back, so.
Alderman Graff, you're next. Make sure your mic phones on, thank you.
The only comment I have about this is actually for the chief. Um, maybe you can go in and about in kind of a second, what Kellogg was saying is that a first-time OWI offender gets fined harder than what a drug paraphernalia person does, is that correct?
Yes.
And explain to me how, um, going back to what Mr. Coath said, that we don't have an issue with if it's alcohol-related, to increase the fine. That's not an issue, but now all of a sudden, we're talking drugs, and minor drugs turn into bigger drugs, but now all of a sudden, this is an issue, and we're worried about money. So I just want to ask your opinion on that.
And what is your question exactly?
Well, my question is, is, is why do you feel that, um, alcohol is taken more serious? I mean, I, I think across the nation, we've looked at alcohol and drunk driving being a very serious issue, and that we have no issue increasing that for the first time, and as a matter of fact, and, once again, you can correct me if I'm wrong, that you can't get it off your record, even though it was something you did when you were eighteen, but now all of a sudden, drug paraphernalia is not a big deal, and we shouldn't find it, because we're worried about the, the jail.
I, I'd call a point of where I, I don't think the, the question's very subjective in nature, and I don't think it's asking for an objective, uh, it's asking for an opinion. Next. Uh.
You're encouraging. Um, drug paraphernalia, this, this is not my full belief in, in this ordinance, is it is not for, it, it's not in any way condoning anything, you know, if you don't agree with the fine, that's, that's where I'm coming from. It's never okay to distribute, you know, do anything like that, those are all felonies, anytime you, you deliver an illegal substance to somebody else, and I, I, I'll, Attorney Schill will correct me, I guess if I'm out of order here, I'd, I'd like to make a motion for this to get more consideration from us, and, and have, uh, something more specific, uh, written up pertaining to how we're going to, we're going to structure this. It sounds, sounds like a couple people mentioned that already.
I'll ask for Attorney Schill's opinion, but I think it's more of a motion to postpone the item, or send it back with some specific information. There's no motion on the floor.
Right, I just want to make sure that there wasn't one from before to, to prove it. I, I, so, what would the direction, then, to staff be? What type of ordinance would you like?
Well, I think we, as a, a council, need to work together to come up with something. I mean, we all want to address this issue, perhaps, we just have maybe different ideas of how exactly, so, I don't know if I can make a motion that this goes to special counsel, but that's what I would, that's what I'll do, and if that's an out-of-order motion, then.
No, you can, you can, um, have it referred to a committee of the whole meeting, if the, uh, or, like I said, unfortunately, we don't have a legislative committee, so these are, have to kind of go right to the council without really much vetting, so.
I would second that. We have a second by Alderman Kellogg. We've got a motion on the floor, I'm going to go to the second, we've got a second by, uh, Alderman Kellogg. So the motion, uh, the clerk could read back the motion as I enter, so that, so everyone's clear where we're at.
Okay, so, we still got you, you can speak after the motion, but, um, motion by Zerflu to postpone, or to refer this item, the, the ordinance amending section twenty-five point one seven four of the municipal code to a committee of the whole meeting, does that sound adequate?
Now we'll go on to, uh, request to speak, Alderman Kellag, you're first.
So, under the current law, uh, they can still issue a DUI or driving under the influence if they are using a substance other than alcohol, I think that's, if my understanding is correct. So, I think when we talk about alcohol laws versus drug laws, um, they, they run one and the same when it comes to driving, we're talking specifically about paraphernalia, and I think we need to keep that in mind, that this is strictly about paraphernalia, it's not about driving, using, um, hosting, it's about paraphernalia, so.
Thank you. Motion on the floor in a second, any further requests to speak? See no further requests to speak. Alderman Blazer, you're next.
This will be my last time. Ultimately, when we get arrested, same with drugs. So, you know, if you don't want to do the crime, don't do the, you know, you don't want to do it, don't do it, and don't accept, you have to accept the consequence to that. We teach our kids that, and unfortunately, as, as a council, we have to make laws to address adults, I guess, so, you know, I'm in favor of a graduated step. You know, if we want to do multiple offenses, I think that's a good idea, and, uh, because the current ordinance is not a, not going to change anything, it's not going to change the amount of the fine, even if we triple it, still up to the judge.
Thank you. See no further requests to speak. Motion is to refer this item to a committee of the whole, to be scheduled, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, seven i's, one nay.
Item nine C, first reading of an ordinance amending certain sections of chapter eight sewage, uh, sewage regulations regarding high-strength waste, gre- grease trap waste, and pota- portable waste and amending rates therein, see the ordinance attached number six. Which is in our packets here. Joe, did you want to speak to the, uh, to the, uh, first reading on this in a short fashion?
Sure, so, this, this proposed ordinance change addresses, um, what, uh, staff and our wastewater superintendent believes is some deficiencies in the current ordinance. Um, there, there are some benefits under, um, number thirteen, the definition of exceptional quality high-strength waste, there are some benefits, significant benefits, to the operation of the wastewater treatment plant to receive this specific type of waste, for the production of, uh, gas and ultimately, uh, energy, uh, to operate the plant, so in limited quantities, um, being able to receive this at no cost is, is a benefit. Uh, grease trap waste and, um, port-a-potty waste has been determined, um, to have a, a significant effect, and that the current, uh, current rate schedule for that is insufficient, hence the proposed alteration. And, hang on a second. And there's also a formula that was found to be, um, after, after the rate study and rates were revised, uh, there was a hauled high-strength waste formula that was found not to have been revised, and therefore, the rate structure in place, um, using the uncorrected formula would result in the utility having to pay a hauler to deliver the waste, and so, the formula correction, uh, mitigates that oversight and, uh, and creates a charge that's appropriate to address haul, hauled high-strength waste.
All right. Council members, what do you wish is regarding that item? Alderman Kubashak, you're first.
Mr. Terry, uh, is this, uh, concurrent with the correspondence that Ryan sent out last week, as far as like a pilot program that he was doing?
So this is not about any, any, uh, pilot program, the, the costs were, it, it is related to it, it's, the, the rates are, um, in effect from the conclusion of the pilot study. The objective of that pilot program was to, um, collect some specialized high-strength waste, uh, specifically from, uh, dairy, in order to balance the nutrients at the plant. Uh, it was through that pilot, as well as just routine operations of the plant and observations of, um, you know, certain items like, um, port-a-potty waste, that, that waste, um, acts more like a, uh, a, a holding tank waste, and should be charged similarly. So this is, uh, these are based on about a year of evaluation of, uh, of the, the type of waste that came to the plant, how the plant reacts to it, and, and trying to be fair in, uh, calculating rates appropriate to the actual cost of treatment.
Thank you. Any other requests to speak, otherwise I'd entertain a motion on the item.
Make a motion to accept.
A motion by Coath, is there a second? Second by Kellogg, motion by, uh, the motion is to approve as presented, I assume?
Yes.
Alderman Coath, all right. Any requests to speak?
Uh, I was just going to ask, Joe, is that June, when I put this ordinance together, effective June one? I guess I was going to circle back with you on that. Is that okay, or, to make these rates effective in terms of the haul waste, or that not going to be an issue?
That's not an issue, that would be fine.
Okay, all right.
See no further requests to speak, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, eight i's, zero nays.
Nine, nine, new business, item D is consider approval of a revised industrial service agreement with the Mariani Packing Company to address an oversight, uh, see the agreement attachment number seven. Entertain a motion on that item, all the persons.
I'll make a motion to approve the service agreement.
You have a motion to approve by Zerflu, is there a second? Second by Reom. Any requests to speak? See no requests to speak, please cast your ballots. Motion is to approve.
Motion carried, eight i's, zero nays.
Item ten, reported the planning commission meeting held on May seventh. The planning commission met at four PM on May seventh in the first-floor conference room here at City Hall. Members present included myself, Alderman Thad Kubashak, Lee Tao, Joe Terry, and Sue Wesley, absent was Shane Burkhart. Others present are on file on, uh, in a list in the clerk's office. The meeting was called to order at four PM, approval of the report from, item one was the approval of the report from the April second, two thousand and eighteen Planning Commission meeting. There was a motion by Tao, second by Wesley, to approve those minutes, and that motion passed unanimously. There were no maps or plots received for item number two. Item number three is a public hearing on plan one eight zero two three five, Love Inc. The applicant was requesting a conditional use to allow for a charitable institution within the R two one-family and two-family residential district. The subject property is located at seven ten twentieth Avenue South. A public hearing was called to order at four oh two PM. Speaking in favor was Rick Mordan, president of Love Inc., and speaking against, uh, was nobody. There was an objection letter received from Kathy Joling, and that's attached. Um, public hearing was closed at four oh four PM. Item four was action on plan one eight two, uh, zero two three five, Love Inc., conditional use to allow charitable institution within the R two district. There was a motion by Terry, second by Wesley, to approve action plan one eight zero two three five, Love Inc., conditional use to allow charitable institution within the R two district, subject to the conditions proposed by staff, uh, and are attached, and that motion carried unanimously. Item number five is public hearing on plan one eight zero two four one, Wood County. The applicant is requesting a rezoning from the A one agricultural district to the R three multifamily residential district. The subject property is located at the southeast corner of seventeenth Avenue- The subject property is located at the southeast corner of 17th Avenue North and Rosecrand Street, parcel 3401585. Public hearing was called to order at 4:05 PM. Speaking in favor of the request was Jason Greenberg from Wood County Planning and Zoning, and Chris Slater, the developer. Speaking against was Joe Zerflu, District 1 Alderperson, Laura Edicharsky, Wayne Graff, Priscilla Kite, Mildred Huffman, Helen Streakstra, Kimberly Stimick, Joe Wiggins, Jane Wisbrocker, Lee Graff, District 2 Alderperson, Igor Artichuski, Charles Kite, and letters of objection from the residents are attached. The public hearing closed at 4:33 PM. Item six was action on Plan 180241, Wood County, rezoning from the A1 district to the R3 district. There was a motion and a second to approve the plan, Wood County, rezoning from A1 to District, A1 district to the R3 district, and that motion failed 2 to 3. Plan number seven is Plan 180287, Altman Construction. The applicant is requesting site plan approval to allow a 10,000-square-foot addition on an existing warehouse. Subject property is located at 2621 Jefferson Street. There was a motion and a second to approve that plan. Altman Construction to allow 10,000-square-foot addition onto an existing warehouse, subject to the conditions of approval recommended by staff, and they were attached, located at 2621 Jefferson Street, and that motion carried unanimously. Item number eight was a referral from City Council regarding sale of produce within residential districts. The commission discussed the vetting of the sale of produce ordinance, though the planning, through three planning commissions and three common council meetings, and did not recommend staff research the matter further. It's important to note that I left the meeting at that time and turned over the chairperson responsibilities to the vice chair, Alderperson Kubashak. Item number nine was a review of the final working draft of zoning ordinance within the, with the consultant Civitech, and setting of the public hearing date. The zoning public hearing will be set for June 19, it's a Tuesday at 5:00 PM here in the common, sorry, common council. Action on the zoning ordinance will tentatively be scheduled for Tuesday, July 17, 2018. Item 10 was adjournment, there was a motion and a second to adjourn, and that motion carried unanimously, with the meeting adjourned at 5:43. Alderpersons, what are your wishes regarding that item?
I'd like to withhold number six, because of Adam Tagan's text to all of us, that the developer is rescinding their proposal right now, and he would like to revisit that at the next month's commission meeting.
So that'll leave the balance of the report available? Are there any other items, I guess we'll try this out, are there any other items individuals wish to withhold from the report? All right. So we didn't have a, we didn't have a motion, well actually, I mean, I guess, he asked for, we withheld, okay. Alderperson Katna, you're first. We do not have a motion.
Regarding the apartments that possibly could be built.
Item six was, right. Attorney's note, did you want to accept the motion before we? So were you making a motion on the balance of the report? I'm sorry, I should have asked for the motion on the balance of the report.
Based on the information we received.
Right, but the rest of the items, you're approving to, you have a motion to approve the rest of the report with the exception of six, sorry. I should have asked for that before I went on to any speaking order. Alderperson Zerflu, would you like to second that motion? All right. So the motion is for the planning commission report with the exception of item number six. And then we'll move into requests to speak. Are there any requests to speak on items 1 through? The motion was to hold that item over, yeah, sorry, I, he wanted to hold it out, I think, at first, right? Was that your, don't want to take words out of your mouth, you wanted to hold over, I'm sorry, hold out that item and take care of the rest of the report, thank you. Alderperson Katna, you're first.
Thank you, Mayor. I got two things. One, there's a living situation around here in regards to apartment buildings, houses, people are having problems finding places to live.
So item number six is actually after, we're gonna, item six has been held out, so, meaning we're only taking action on the items, the other items right now. Sorry for the confusion. Are there any other requests to speak on the balance of the report, with the exception of item six? Okay, we'll move into a vote, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, eight ayes, zero nays.
All right, so that leaves the item six.
Well, Adam, maybe you could, for the audience and for the public watching, and the common council, reiterate what you said with your email about that developer.
Yeah, we received an email from Jason Greenberg at the county, formally requesting that the council postpone any decision on Plan 0241, I believe was the number on it, which is the rezoning from A1 to R3 for a potential multifamily development. The county had received information from the developer that they would like the opportunity to meet with the neighborhood, to see if there is any room for compromise or changes to the development, so that's why they're requesting the additional time on this.
So, Alderperson Kellogg, did you want to speak any further, or make a motion? Sorry, were you yielding time, did you?
I would yield time, I think you mentioned you want to make a comment on that? Jake?
It's being withheld for further discussion, correct?
Yeah, it's being held out, so now it would be...
So I'll make my comments then.
Somebody could make a motion on the, on the item. Alderpersons, Zerflu, you're first.
Motion has to be in the affirmative, correct? Because I don't want us to get confused like we did a couple months ago. Okay, so, then I will make the affirmative motion to approve action on... Can you make a motion to approve the other commission's action? Or would I have to just approve the action on the plan?
Well, are you in, do you want the rezoning, or do you not?
No, I spoke against it.
I mean, I said, do you want to bring this matter before the body to approve of this rezoning?
I want the, I want the body to decide right now, correct?
So you could do a motion to approve the rezoning, if you wish, right?
But... Yes.
No, you, the actions, to approve something, to pass something, those are all affirmative. To deny something is negative. The planning commission denied something, so you want to make something to approve it. You're not, their recommendation is just a recommendation, it's as if this action is right before you again right now. Do you want to approve the rezoning, or do you not? Or do you want to hold it over, or whatever? So, the proper motion would be an affirmative motion to approve the rezoning if, in fact, you want to have the vote on it today.
Would you like to make a motion?
I will make a motion to approve the rezoning from A1 to R3, action Plan 18-0241.
Motion to approve, is there a second? Alderperson Kellogg seconded it? Move into discussion, I understand there's some individuals that request to speak, it sounds like. Alderperson, Blazer, you're first.
I guess I'm more confused, because the way I was thinking that Mr. Zerflu wanted to approve the planning commission's report as it stood, so to deny it, basically.
But that is not an affirmative motion on the question before the body. The question before the body is to rezon or not to rezon. It's not, right?
But if he wants to not approve the rezoning, how would he state that motion at that point?
Well, if he wants to have it heard today, he would need to, you'd need to bring the action before the council. So he would make, making a motion is simply saying you want to bring, you want this considered by the council at this time. It doesn't mean that you're in favor of it or against it. I move that the approval of this zoning is brought before the body, if I get a second, then there's enough for us to debate it, and then he can vote how he, how he wants.
Alderperson Zerflu, you're next.
Yes, I was just gonna...
Excuse me, did you have a question for me? Mr. Kubashak?
No, I, we're... It was one of those things where, when I asked the question first, I was like, when we approve a consent agenda, and there is a negative recommendation or referral or vote in a consent agenda, when you, when the body approves that, we're approving that negative referral.
As a consent agenda, everyone is in agreement.
Correct, correct.
It does not appear that you wanted this to be a consent agenda.
Correct, and, and, no, 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 I absolutely agree with you, I've got, you know, I was like, I fully understand, so.
Alderperson Zerflu.
Okay, so, last year, we figured this out. I am against the rezoning, that was in the minutes, my position hasn't changed. I had to make this motion to get it heard, so I'm gonna vote against my own motion, that's the proper way to handle it. I will yield time to anyone who...
The public hearing has been held and been closed, so we cannot actually reopen the public hearing at this time.
Sure, can I recognize a specific person, or would that...
No, that would reopen the public hearing unless the city attorney advises otherwise.
Right, I don't know if any of you were, when our zoning consultants were giving some presentations regarding, if the public hearing is at planning, then that's really when the evidence and information is taken, and the, now it's a deliberation between the governing body members, and it's not a public hearing, it's not a time to take more information or ask questions of people, so I guess I just caution you on that.
So if the, if the message, if the evidence should have been presented to us at the public hearing, that was the opportunity to hold a public hearing. We don't have a public hearing notice on our agenda this evening, so...
Fair enough, I'll just summarize then some issues if that's...
This is, this is the deliberation of the body at this time.
So the, obviously the development is a concern for a lot of residents, not just that live in my district, I think there was one that lives outside, but, and an R3 in the middle of a, of an agricultural zone, I just, there's no other development around there, and I just have concerns about all of a sudden plopping an R3 there. Down the road, there's a few R1s, I'm guessing, single-family, there's not even, there's not even any duplexes that I can think of anywhere along Rosecrand Street. So, I know long-term, as Adam Tagan pointed out, it fits within the city's plan according to city staff, but that's, that's my opposition to it, and also the opposition that was relayed to me, so, thank you.
Next speaking is Alderperson Raome. Alderperson Kubashak, you're next.
Thank you. I think one of the concerning things that I had, and I think that it was just addressed, that there was a hearing that occurred, and evidence had to be submitted at that time. And realistically, I guess, I don't even know about a planned zoning, or, I'm sorry, planned unit development type of thing, because that's what we weren't even talking about at the planning commission, we're talking about a rezoning request, and one of the things that I brought up was the fact that this is a spot zoning, you know, and again, we shouldn't even be talking about a unit development, because this is a case where there's residential ag, and then there's also ag in, it's south of the tracks, there's a single-family residential, and this was a case where there is no multifamily residential in the area. And I pointed this out, that in the two developments that are potentially proposed, the one that's actively going on right across from Lincoln High School on Corner of 16th and Pepper, there are other like zoning, as far as multifamily, as well as maybe the ones that we, the development that we entertained, that is, in the Central East Center parking lot are proposed for that, there are other multifamily zoning in there. Whereas this particular issue, and again, it's a zoning issue, it's not even a planned unit development or whatever else, specifically, and I can't speak for the other planned commissioners that voted the same way that I did, but it's a case where I have to go with the evidence, and there was no evidence, in my opinion, and being a quasi judicial process, again, we can only hear the evidence there, and there was, there was a lack of evidence to compel me to approve a zoning change from agriculture, A1, to R3 multifamily. And which also, and the reason why I point this out is because it was just confirmed with the essence of information only being heard at the plan commission hearing, I think we received email correspondence from someone after the fact that we shouldn't be looking at or evaluating in any type of decision that we make. So with that said, as one of the plan commission members who voted no for the rezoning request, I will also be voting no on this particular matter, because again, we can't, legally, we can't even talk about voting up or down a planned unit development, because we need to address the zoning issue first at hand.
Where are you getting the planned unit development? It's not, this is a rezoning, correct?
That's what I mean.
Yeah, there's no putt involved here.
And I say that because with what has been in the media, and interestingly enough, one of the news channels left a message on my home phone wanting to interview plan commission members, and one of the things that they talked about was a housing development. And the reason why I didn't call them back was because I didn't vote on a housing development. So if that's the case where, and I've got no problem submitting to your office, Sue, the voicemail that I got, but that's, like I said, we're not even at a point of a development, we're just specifically addressing a zoning issue. I thought, I guess.
That's correct, it's a rezoning, and that's what you're, right. So, so this is not approving a planned unit development? Right, but there are no materials that indicate that, and if Channel 7 or Channel 9 said that, I guess I...
Someone was disseminating information, and it wasn't me.
I would say to pay attention to the actual staff materials and the actual application versus the news media. I don't want you to confuse the issue, but it's a, it's a simple rezoning.
Correct. But within the staff report and within the request to rezon, there was some additional information shared. And as a point of clarification, the 16th and Pepper required a rezoning from industrial to multifamily R3 to achieve that development in a similar fashion, where the applicant presented the information with the rezoning application. Alderperson Katna, you're next.
I'm new, so, I don't know if I can do this, but can I make a motion to delay this vote?
There's already been a motion on the floor.
Can't do that?
We could by unanimous consent. So the motion has been made to amend the original motion, which has been in the training that you all just came from, so we're gonna apply that knowledge and learning to this process, so the motion has been made to, finish your motion, please, postpone the item until a certain specified period of time.
Next council meeting.
Motion has been made, is there unanimous consent? Is there any objections, I guess? There's an objection, so we'll go into a roll call vote, in order to amend the original motion to reflect exactly what was just made. So we'll start on the end here, Zerflu? Graff?
Nay.
Kellogg?
Yea.
Raome?
Nay.
Coth?
Nay.
Katna?
Yea.
Kubashak?
Nay.
And Blazer?
Nay.
All right. Clerk's tally, I'd say the motion fails, did you have a motion fail? Okay, so now we're back to the original motion and discussion on item, did you want to speak further to, to your motion? Okay, so, Kellogg, you're next.
I was at that meeting, and the residents, I really felt for them. I think they have legitimate concerns. I visited that location three times, and the developer believes that with modifications, it's a conditional situation where we could request that they put berms, 50 feet of trees along the border, exit on 17th Avenue, and another, another conditions that we would request. That's the same thing as QuickTrip. When QuickTrip went in, we had a number of issues, and as a result of those issues, and the residents, they put in a taller fence in the back, they put in... the residents, they put in the taller fence in the back, they put in landscaping, and, and a lot of other things to ameliorate the problems that the residents have. And I, I'm thinking, one minute we talk about, um, enough apartments, quality apartments, these departments, not this particular one, but would maybe a thousand dollars a month. Where are, we have lower income, uh, near, on Pepper, we have, uh, senior housing, uh, near the mall area proposed, and what about, we have expansion at the hospital, we have expansions in other areas. So these people that want to, uh, work in Wisconsin Rapids are going to be going to Plover? Are they going to be building homes in Grand Rapids and the revenue? And, and the thing is, the city needs revenue too. Our, our salaries, our employees are going up, benefits are going up, costs are going up. So to, to say that we're not gonna consider this as a, a residential type area, or rezone it, um, I think is, is misguided. In the long term, like I say, I, I know people that just can't find quality apartments at a thousand dollars and so forth and moving out to Plover. They're shopping at Plover, they're living out at Plover, but they're taking their money to Plover. That's bare of the living. So when are we going to really consider this? But I do have empathy for the people that live in the area, and it seems to me that we could provide such conditions, and just like I used that example of QuickTrip and there's others around the city, that we could ameliorate the problems, you're not gonna please everybody, I know that, but I think you can address it. So that's my concern, that, why I made that motion. And to postpone it one month, to have the developer come back, or somebody come back with a proposal, and that commission can still vote it down. And if, their, their hands are not tied, say no, and I'll come back to the common council, and at that time we can vote it down. So, I guess, uh, that's why I made the motion, to pull it out, just postpone it, and have another deliber, deliberation next month, come back to the common council next month, and if those people vote it down, vote it down.
All right, s, Alder Person Zerflu, you're next.
So just, I mean, just the zoning, I, you know, not considering whatever might be done with it, there's still gonna be ag to the south, east, and north, and I just, I don't agree with plopping an R3 out of nowhere just in the middle of ag, that's, that's my only, that's my only option, I don't, I don't disagree with you.
Adam, did you have any further comments on the matter?
Um, I mean, obviously you all received my staff advisory report, um, but ultimately, I understand the concern about spot zoning, and I had answered Kubashak's, Alderman Kubashak's comments at the commission meeting as well. You have a planned land use map, which is gonna be different than your existing zoning map. At some point, the two should coincide, otherwise you need to change your planned land use map. The R3 zoning district, again, in my opinion, as your, um, planning person, is that an R3 district is consistent with the planned mixed-use category of the comprehensive plan. You can't, it, ag is not, so at some point, change should occur if you want it to be consistent with your comprehensive plan. And again, this is consistent, in my opinion, so it has to start somewhere. It may seem like it's spot zoning because there is nothing else in that area, but that's how everything gets developed at some point. At some point, it was all vacant, it was all undeveloped, and it had to be rezoned for development. So again, that's why I'm saying it's consistent, that's why I'm saying it's not spot zoning, because it's consistent with your long-range plans, and you have to start somewhere. But again, I respectfully understand where you're saying that there is other ag in the area, I understand what you're getting at, but I would disagree.
Seeing no further requests to speak, the motion is to approve item number six. Please cast your ballots. The motion is to approve the rezoning from A1 district to the R3 district.
Motion fails. Six, or two ayes, six nays.
Move on to item number 11, the standing council committee reports. Item A is a report of the Finance and Property Committee meeting held on May 1st. Alder Person Zerflu, who's the chair? Alder Person Zerflu, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Your Honor. The Finance and Property Committee met at 5:15 PM on Tuesday, May 1st, 2018, in the first-floor conference room at the City Hall. Committee members Joe Zerflu and Shane Blazer were present, Alder Person Jacob Katna was excused. With unanimous consent, Alder Person Kubashak voted in place of Alder Person Katna. Others present is on file in the clerk's office. The meeting was called to order at 5:16 PM. Agenda item number two, consider for approval a proposal from Arc Central for Architectural Services for the McMillan Memorial Library restroom renovation project. There was a motion by Kubashak, second by Zerflu, to approve the proposal from Arc Central Incorporated for Architectural Services for the McMillan Memorial Library restroom renovation project. Motion carried unanimously. Item three, consider for approval a special events application submitted by current Wisconsin Rapids for an event called Downtown On Tap, to be held in conjunction with Cranberry Blossom Fest from 5:00 PM to 10:00 PM on June 15th, 2018. There was a motion by Blazer, second by Zerflu, to approve a special events application submitted by current Wisconsin Rapids for an event called Downtown On Tap, to be held in conjunction with Cranberry Blossom Fest from 5:00 PM to 10:00 PM on June 15th, 2018, and approval of premises extensions for the following premises. Bottoms Up Bar, 126 Second Street North, Holly Rocks, 114 Second Street North, Whiskey Rapids Saloon, 150 Second Street North, Jennings &amp; Company, 210 First Street North, and Karen's Wines &amp; Steins, 160 First Street North. Motion carried unanimously. Item four, consider for approval a request from the Wisconsin Rapids Rafters to hold a non-baseball event, the Rushing Rapids Craft Beer Festival, at Witterfield on September 8th, 2018. There was a motion by Blazer, second by Kubashak, to approve a request from the Wisconsin Rapids Rafters to hold a non-baseball event, the Rushing Rapids Craft Beer Festival, at Witterfield on September 8th, 2018, with a $250 event fee to be paid to the city. Motion carried unanimously. Item five, consider for approval a resolution amending the 2018 budget. There was a motion by Zerflu, second by Blazer, to approve resolution number 15, amending the 2018 budget. Motion carried unanimously. See resolution number 15 attached to this report. Item number six, review and approve the revised 2018 debt issue. There was a motion by Blazer, second by Kubashak, to approve the revised 2018 debt issue schedule. Motion carried unanimously. Item seven, preliminary review and approval of the 2018-2019 liquor beer wine license applications. Motion by Blazer, second by Kubashak, to approve two six-month Class B beer applications. Wisconsin Rapids Men's Softball League and Wisconsin Rapids Women's Softball League, both licenses are effective from May 1st, 2018 until October 31st, 2018. The remaining licenses will be considered for approval at the June Finance and Property Committee meeting. Motion carried unanimously. Item number eight, beverage operator license applications. There was a motion by Blazer, second by Zerflu, to approve the beverage operator licenses, and they are on file in the clerk's office. That motion carried unanimously. Item nine, audit of the bills for March 2018. There was a motion by Zerflu, second by Blazer, to approve check numbers 71841 through 72149, and manual check numbers 99660 through 99675. That motion carried unanimously. Item 10, set next meeting date, the next regularly scheduled meeting of the Finance and Property Committee will be on Tuesday, June 5th, at 5:00 PM. Item number 11, is adjournment. Motion by Blazer, second by Kubashak, to adjourn. Motion carried unanimously. The meeting adjourned at 6:16 PM. And before I make a motion to approve the report, is there any items anyone would like withheld? Then I'll make a motion to approve the balance of the report.
Motion by Zerflu, is there a second? Second by Blazer? Are there any requests to speak? Seeing no requests to speak, the motion is to approve, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, eight ayes, zero nays.
Item 11B is the Public Works Committee meeting. Alder Person Rayom, the floor is yours. Do you wanna move around? Here.
Looking for minutes for the second meeting.
That'll work.
Public Works Committee met at 6:00 PM on Tuesday, February 2nd, in the first-floor conference room at City Hall. All members were present. List of others attending is on file in clerk's office. Item was, one was to review the DPW report, the report was reviewed, and it's available for viewing on w, w, dot, wi-rapids.org. Item two, review status of current public works projects. Status of the pro, uh, public works projects were reviewed. Item three, review of draft capital improvement plan. Uh, plan was reviewed. Item four, review and consider approval of the low qualified bidder for the 2018 cu, uh, concrete paving and sidewalk contract. It was moved and seconded to approve a contract with Timber Companies with the understanding that the Wilson Street pavement rehabilitation project will be removed from the contract. And that motion carried unanimously. Item five, review and consider approval of the low qualified bidder for the 2018 asphalt co, uh, paving contract. It's moved and seconded to approve of the low qualified bidder, American Asphalt, for the 2018 asphalt paving contract, in the amount of 211,000 do, 211,494 dollars and eighty cents. That motion carried unanimously. Item six, was requested from Pete's Market to install sanitary and water service to 1331 14th Street North. It's moved and seconded to postpone this item until the next regularly scheduled public works meeting. And it was. Uh, item seven, review the referral list, items 16 and 17 were removed. Item eight is adjourned, there was a motion to second to, to adjourn, and the motion carried unanimously. The meeting adjourned at 7:57 PM. And with that, if there is any, I'll move for adoption, or, do you wanna do them together or separately?
We'll do them separately, if there's anyone that wishes to, would, um, pull anything out. I guess if there's, so this is the first item? Or the first report, sorry? Let's all get the motion on the. Do you wanna hit the motion on your remote, they have the motion on the remote. Is there a second?
I'll move this, I'll move, yeah.
Okay. There's a motion to approve, is there a second? Second by Koth, any discussion on the report? There any requests to speak? Seeing no requests to speak, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, eight ayes, zero nays.
Item, uh, D, the, sorry, item C, 11C. Alder Person Rayom?
Public Works Committee met at 5:00 PM on Monday, May 14th, 2018, in the first-floor conference room at City Hall. All members were present, including Mayor Verwink. A list of others present are on file in the clerk's office. Item one, discuss and take action on sewer and water, water utilities on 14th Street North, between Norton Street and the North Dead End. The mo, there was a motion to second to administer and install sewer and water services to 1331 14th Street North. That motion carried unanimously. Item two, discuss a change order policy for the West Side Lift Station and Forest Main Projects. The motion is second to offer, authorize the mayor to approve and execute change orders on the West Side Lift Station and Forest Main Projects, in an amount up to the contingency amount already approved and budgeted for the project. In the event it is determined that the Public Works Committee is not able to timely meet to address the change order request without delaying the project and/or potentially causing additional costs, the motion failed zero to three. Item three was to adjourn, and there was motion to second to adjourn, the motion carried unanimously, the meeting adjourned at 6:36 PM. And I move for adoption of the report.
We have a motion to approve, is there a second?
I, I'd like to hold out number two.
We have a request to hold out item number two. So with the exception of item number two, um, we have a motion to second, Alder Person Rayom, second by Koth, to approve the report. Are there any requests to speak? Seeing no requests to speak, please cast your ballots. The motion is to approve item number one, essentially, of that report.
Motion carried, eight ayes, zero nays.
Alder Person Kellogg, you had requested to hold out item number two, did you wanna speak to that request?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve the request by the staff as presented.
We have a motion to approve as, as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Zerflu. Move into discussion. Are there any requests to speak? Alder Person Kubashak, you're first.
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, I think that this item was thoroughly vetted last night at the second property committee meeting that we had of the month, and I don't recall how much time it took, but it actually, our meeting adjourned at around 7:35, no, 6:35, because we started at 5:00. Uh, so it was a case where it was one half of an hour, over an hour and a half meeting, and it, it, it failed three to zero, or three, zero to three. It's a case where, uh, it's a, and does everybody have the, the actual recommendation in front of them, that staff recommended to make this potential policy change for, um, uh, change order policy? Interestingly enough, I followed up, one of the suggestions was made that this committee, the Public Works Committee, cannot meet in time to approve change orders for, uh, the, the West Side Lift Station improvements project. And I find that troubling, in fact, I find that, uh, as an attack on this committee, because I don't know if there's been any precedent made of any committee not being able to meet on a, on a timely manner. I, I just, I, I, I actually feel hurt that that was what's recommended, is that because we cannot meet in a timely fashion, it is assumed in the future that the city is gonna incur penalties from a contractor, from the contractor, um, because it will push their work back two, three, four days, or whatever the suggestion is. And again, um, I think that this is a potential remedy to a problem that doesn't exist, and that may never exist. And I, um, followed up with finance, and I asked the question, has the city ever, to anybody's recollection in finance, has the city ever been dinged by a contractor for executing the, the governmental process? Contractors know, contractors that bid on municipal jobs and school jobs know that there is a procedure in place that, uh, the, the board, the committee, or whoever else needs, uh, to vet through that process, and they understand that. And I've worked in the construction field long enough that I've worked for contractors that have worked on municipal, municipal projects and school projects, I have myself. And I know this particular contractor, that's a general contractor, and i, it's a case where, um, I, I cannot believe that despite the fact that somehow, within moments of asking where this language was in, in a contract, it's almost like it was combed through, the contract was combed through, to find this fault, to see if, um, this, this change order house, policy could be changed, to give the mayor unilateral authority up to the con, uh, contingency amount to, uh, issue, uh, uh, um, a, a change order. I, and, and I, I don't have the figures in front of me, in fact, I didn't write them down, but, uh, I believe, uh, Mr. Graff wrote them down, and the, the numbers are significant. And, uh, as far as that goes, um, the, it, it was suggested that the mayor is the head of all staff, and I agree with that, but I believe that this body is the head of the budget. And once we start, and it'd be a different story, it'd be completely different story if somehow the committee became inept and dragged their feet and wouldn't pass a change order, and wouldn't pass a change order, and finally, for the first time, that staff can rec, uh, recollect from finance, that we get penalized, liquidated damages from a contractor, uh, then I will be willing to take this particular issue up. But until it becomes a problem, and I cannot see it being a problem, I am. But until it becomes a problem, and I cannot see it being a problem, I am absolutely against this. And that is one reason. And again, we vetted it. We talked for a long time last night. And the committee themselves was unanimous in terms of voting this down. Thank you.
Alderperson Kellogg, you're next.
Well, it seems to me, I was on the committee for six years and I've been prior to retired in administration, there was contracts and so forth. There's always something that surfaces that you didn't expect, and that's why you have a contingent amount. And it seems to me if we postpone it, it's going to cost the contractor more. We may have to pour more, pay more. And we have to have a little bit of trust in the people that run those departments, like Joe Terry. I have a tremendous amount of respect in the mayor. If they find that there's a problem, then they can come back and meet with that committee. But they're going to, they want to hold the budget in line. I've never seen that not happen. And why postpone it and possibly cause more costs down the road? And if every time, I mean, there's so many contracts that we have, and if that committee or we have to postpone projects monthly or every two months, it's just going to cost us money. And I have no problem with giving the responsibility to Joe. If we find there's a problem down the road, then we have to address it with Joe Terry and the mayor. But I have not found the problem. I don't know, Tom Reon, if you've ever saw a problem over the years that you've been on the common council, but I haven't. And that's why we have a contingency amount. And everything that I've built, remodeled, or whatever, there's always something that's screwed up that I didn't anticipate. And that's what happens with the city. So I'd just like to make a motion to approve the request by, as stated by the staff.
We do have a motion on the floor, so you're set to go. And we're going to go into Alderperson Blazer, you're next.
I guess there was a reference, was there a policy presented or at, did you make a, was there a policy presented at the Public Works about? Okay, I hadn't seen one. So I didn't know if it was like a policy going forward, or a policy, or request just for this project? And then I guess with Mr. Kellogg's comments, have there been issues in the past with change orders being approved at any, or not getting approved timely? Or are we tracking a problem that isn't there? Those are my two questions.
So your first question, there is a change order policy in effect for the engineering department. The copy of the policy that I found in the engineering department's policy manual didn't have a signature and date. It was a digital version. So, but it was in the book, so I speculated that it's in effect. It allows the city engineer to approve up to $5,000 or 8% of a construction project, again, within the budget that's been approved. This isn't, this isn't the city engineering project. This is a wastewater project. And I don't know, for example, how the Centralia project, how those change orders were reviewed and approved. But it's my understanding there were, you know, just about 50 change orders on that, on that particular project. When we looked at the change order policy, there was some concern that it's a bit outdated. Different projects, if it's a smaller project, $5,000 and 8% might be a good number. I spoke with a finance director on this, and he felt that at some point in time in the near future, we should try to address it globally. And, you know, as we discussed, eventually, perhaps a recommendation is that, that when a project is approved by the council, those parameters would be set on a project-by-project basis. You know, this isn't a $100,000 project. This is a multimillion dollar project. If there's a change order, it's because of some unanticipated scope issue. It's not, you know, it's not a building project where, you know, there might be some additional furniture needed or something like that. The types of changes, you know, we're trying to not create a solution for a problem that doesn't exist, but knowing that it involves excavation in soils that, as they have been excavating, have been found to be inconsistent with the borings that were done, there are going to be some change orders. So this request, if it's, if you read it carefully, doesn't make any effort to bypass the committee. In fact, it says, if it's determined that the Public Works Committee is not able to timely meet and address. So if there's a change order request that could potentially shut the project down, every effort would be made to call and hold an emergency meeting of the Public Works Committee to make a timely application or timely review of that request. Now, on this particular project, and this is, this request is for this project, the West Side Lift Station and Force Main Project. So it's two projects, but it's related to the same wastewater project, right? This request is specifically for the lift station and Force Main. It doesn't set precedence for anything else. That's why it's specific for this, for this project. And it's not to exceed the budget. It's not to exceed the contingencies that have been set in the contract. It's to allow staff to have the authority to make those important changes if timing is an issue and only if the committee is unable to meet in a timely fashion. And I think that's spelled out, you know, spelled out. I haven't been involved in other multimillion dollars projects here within the city as far as change order approvals. You know, the wastewater plant project, I know that the, I believe the council gave the commission and the superintendent authority to make those decisions. I can't speak to those because I wasn't here and I haven't done the research to know. But on this project, we want to avoid potential for additional costs to the city. It is completely common, boilerplate language on any construction project contract that you can find has terms in there for delays. And, you know, with a project like this, when the equipment on site, you know, it could be $10,000 to $20,000 a day for delay costs based on the equipment and the staff that's working on this project.
Can you please provide us with anecdotal evidence that it could be $10,000 to $20,000 per day? Other cities, ourselves, but again, I already vetted our own finance department, but you can't make statements like that.
I guess point of order, Alderperson Kubashak, it was actually Alderperson Blazer that had the floor. Alderperson Blazer, did you have anything further?
I was going to say, I don't, I don't have issue with that within those parameters. I would, I'd like to at least be kept advised of change orders and what those change orders are for and why was it necessary? And I agree that, you know, there is a budget and there's a contingency for that reason, but I just want to keep, be kept advised of what's going on.
Understood.
But I don't have an issue with that.
Thank you. Alderperson Zerflu, you're next.
Shane just basically hit what I wanted to touch on. I mean, there's a contingency budget for a reason, and I certainly think this is a practical, practical thing. The only question I would have is who is it that decides the committee wouldn't be able to meet in a timely manner? If that was the chairman of the committee, I'd have zero reservations, I think, about this.
I guess my reaction would be within a 24-hour window from work stoppage, right? You have to notice a meeting 24 hours prior. You can have a meeting, actually, an emergency, I'm not sure, a committee meeting. I mean, there is a challenge in an alternative to this, but we'll go through the question here.
Right, that's correct. And it would only be if the change orders are required to prevent work stoppage that the change order's been reviewed by the city's consulting engineer. And there's also our wastewater superintendent, myself, that would, you know, that are involved in any kind of a review. If it doesn't involve a work stoppage, then there's no need to rush. It's just trying to make sure that we have measures in place, reasonable measures in place, that could prevent a work stoppage.
I think it could be fiscally maybe irresponsible not to. My opinion. Thank you.
See no further requests to speak. There's a motion to second on the floor. Please cast your ballots.
Can you please restate the motion?
Oh, sure. So Clerk to restate the motion. Oh, I'm sorry, it's the same item that's on the, that's on the agenda. Sorry, the minutes. The motion, let's see. To authorize the mayor to approve and execute change orders on the West Side Lift Station and Force Main Projects in an amount up to the contingency amount already approved and budgeted for the project in the event it is determined that the Public Works Committee is not able to timely meet to address the change order request without delaying the project and/or potentially causing additional costs. We do have a request to speak by Alderperson Kubashak, so we'll go ahead and take that request.
I'll be real quick. I didn't speak during the ordinance change of the potential narcotics, but, so I'll do my three, four, five here real quick. But again, this is, it's up to you guys. I mean, we, the committee voted it down unanimously. If you want to give up this, right, I know in the past, and even when I've sat, I've gotten calls from residents saying, hey, people are blaming you for these expenditures. And it was suggested, well, the council made the decision ultimately, regardless of any type of referral. You're taking the public works committee's oversight away? We might as well just be called the driveway and sidewalk committee because that's all we're going to be doing. And again, moving forward, again, this is, I think, a litmus test right now, and it's going to happen to other committees. And in fact, one thing that, and it isn't about the topic, but I'm looking at the org chart that we have, the counseling even on there. Are we completely written off? Is this a case where we're going to get nitpicked and hammered and all of our rights taken away, that we're going to be a symbolic board and that's it? I don't know. I guess, like I said, it's up to you guys. It's up to this body to decide whether we retain our abilities. And right now, it isn't a financial problem. It hasn't been in the past. There is no evidence to suggest that we're going to have a financial problem. I hear, hearsay evidence, but I don't have any proof in front of me. It's literally an agenda item that got thrown on there, and the committee didn't even have the language until that day. It was less than 24 hours for us to even be able to potentially vet that. And then it's this wholesale takeage of our own oversight. So again, that's all I got to say.
Alderperson Blazer, you're next.
All right. And it's not in the motion, but I just want to reiterate that, as Mr. Kubashak said, that, you know, if we get questioned, that's why I want to be aware of any expenses and changes or anything like that.
Understood.
See no further requests to speak? Everyone's aware of the motion? Any misinformation or misunderstanding there? Okay, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried. Five ayes, three nays.
And I would just point out that should the Public Works Committee have to meet on those items, it's my understanding that those items will have to go to a city council meeting. So there will have to be, in the event that the city council or the Public Works Committee would have to meet, there would be a council meeting after that.
Can I, we may want to have Attorney Schill review the policy because it appears that if the, if the council approved the policy, council actually authorized the committee to make those decisions, as it's written in the policy. So we'll need to review that, I think, to confirm.
Okay, I'm not sure what you mean. Review this policy?
To, there was a question about, and maybe I misunderstood, Ms. Mayor, that if the Public Works Committee performs a review, that that review then needs to go before the council?
That's correct. And that's one of the reasons that you're really talking about two different committees having to meet to make the definitive decision.
And I do believe that that particular policy states that the Public Works Committee, that the council gave the Public Works Committee the authority to make that decision under the existing policy in the engineering document. So...
Oh, the existing policy that we have, not, not...
Correct.
...the action tonight.
If, no matter what amount you're saying? I guess I'm...
For amounts that were over $5,000 or 8% of a project, that policy authorizes the Public Works Committee to make those decisions. So it appears that perhaps the council's already given that authority to the committee. But again, I'll get a copy of that policy and, you know, you can perform a review and analysis.
Alderperson Blazer, did you have a question or a comment? Oh, okay, all right. Okay. Item 11D, reported the Human Resources Committee meeting held on May 1st. Mr. Aldeperson Coth.
Thank you, Your Honor. The Human Resources Committee met at 4:00 PM on Tuesday, May 1st, 2018, in the third floor conference room. All members were present. List of those attending is on file with the Clerk's office. Meeting was called to order by Chairperson Coth at 4:00 PM. Item number two, there was continued discussion around the city's health plan for the July 1 renewal. Committee discussed options and potential changes to the city's health plan prior to the July 1 renewal. Item three, review and approve the requests from Parks and Recreation to increase the pay range for temporary summer employees. It was moved by Zerflu and seconded by Kellogg to approve the request from Parks and Recreation Department to increase the pay range for temporary summer employees to $10.50 to $12 hourly. Motion carried unanimously. Discuss, item four was to discuss LTE hourly rates in consideration of changing the current rate structure to allow flexibility between two rates of pay. It was moved by Kellogg and seconded by Zerflu that LTE hourly rate structure to be changed to allow flexibility between two rates of pay, $16 an hour and $20 an hour. Motion carried unanimously. This is a change, this is a change in the structure of this program. Employees will have the flexibility to be paid $16 an hour for basic labor and $20 an hour for skilled tasks. Item five was to set the next meeting date. There will be a special Human Resources Committee meeting on Friday, May 11th, at 3:00 PM. The next regular Human Resources Committee meeting will be on Friday, June 1st, at 3:00 PM. Item six was to adjourn. It was moved by Kellogg, seconded by Zerflu to adjourn. The motion carried. The meeting adjourned at 4:31 PM. With that, I look for adoption of the minutes.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second? Second by Zerflu. Alderperson Graff, you're first.
So the one thing I would like to discuss is the review, or it asked that I would have had the opportunity to hold out item three, which was the approval of, to increase the rate of pay for summer help. I have an issue with increasing the rate of pay for summer help for recruitment purposes. I work at a facility.
Is there unanimous consent to amend the motion to hold that item out? I mean, is there any, I guess, is there any objection to holding that item out? Seeing and hearing no objection, that item will be held out. So we'll move on to the balance of the report. We've got a motion and a second on the floor. Please cast your ballots. Motion is to approve.
Motion carried. Eight ayes, zero nays.
At least item number three. Are there any requests to speak or is there a motion? Alderperson Graff, you're first.
The one thing I'd like to say about this is I have an issue is using pay rate to look for recruitment. And the reason I bring this up is I work at a facility that offers $22, $20 to $22 an hour for somebody that's starting out shoveling chips, and we still can't get enough applicants. So increasing the rate of pay for summer help is not going to bring more applicants to the table. So I would ask that this body take a look at this because it's hard for us to justify the rate of pay increase when contract negotiations don't go well with current employees to the city. With that being said, I think we should have an opportunity to look at Mid State Technical College. Dawn, I know I had talked to you a little bit about the internship that we do at the mill, working with them. They get summer credit. It helps with getting people to our facility to work as summer help. They get college credits for it. They pay Mid State small fee. They get on-the-job training, and we can specialize individual tasks like arborist or mechanics, and we can work with Mid State and partner with Mid or mechanics, and we can work with Mid State and partner with Mid State in order to help us fill these, some of these positions. So I'd just ask the council that we really look at this. Like I said, we do this at the mill currently. It works very well, and a lot of the people that we get out of the intern program actually turns out to be full-time employees for us. And I think this is an option that we should look at moving forward. And once again, I don't believe the rate of pay is going to increase the amount of people that are going to come for summer help. Thank you.
Are there, Dawn, did you have any comments on the matter?
So, I think that is important to clarify. These are very, very entry-level positions. It could be anything from supervising T-ball for six-year-olds, to when we had a pool, it could be a pool attendant. These are very entry-level positions that are not typically thought of as giving any type of credit for internships. I think we could definitely look at that for Mid State. I'm not so sure that these positions would be the type of positions. These positions are generally held by anyone 16- and 17-year-olds, you know, and it's basically park and rec positions. So I just wanted to clarify that.
And oftentimes, the labor pool we're competing for is retail, right? Retail or fast food. So, I would disagree with this assessment that this is not a recruitment tool.
McDonald's and all the other fast food are increasing their rates. It becomes increasingly difficult for us to find good kids that will work these positions.
The community has a three-point, sorry, 4.12% unemployment rate right now, and so we're going to have to, rate of pay has something to do with recruitment efforts, definitely. Entertained a motion on the item.
I'll make a motion to raise the summer help rate of pay from, for the range of $10.50 to $12.00 an hour.
We have a motion by ZERFLU. Is there a second?
Second.
And we'll give that to KELOG. Any discussion, further discussion on that item? Are there any requests to speak? See no requests to speak, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, six ayes, two nays.
Move on to item number 11E, reported the Human Resources Committee meeting held May 11th. Alderperson Koth.
Thank you, Your Honor. The Human Resources Committee met at 3:00 PM on Friday, May 11th, 2018, in first-floor conference room. All members were present. A list of others present is on file in the clerk's office. Meeting was called a order by Chairperson Koth at 3:00 PM. Item two was to review, approve the Aspiras arise option as the city's health plan for the July 1 renewal. Confirm health insurance premiums for 7/1 of 18 if the move to Aspiras arise is approved. It was moved by ZERFLU, seconded by KELOG, to approve the Aspiras arise as the city's health plan provider for the July 1 renewal. With the premiums, with the premium amounts for single-payer plan being $756.84, and a two-person plan being $1,527.21, and a family plan being $2,186.19. Motion carried unanimously. Item three, pursuant to Wisconsin statutes 19.85 para 1 para C, the committee will vote to go into closed session considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation date of any public employee or which governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. It was moved by ZERFLU, seconded by Koth, to go into closed session pursuant to 19.85 para 1 para C of Wisconsin statutes. A roll call vote was taken, and all members voted in the affirmative. In closed session, the committee will review and verify the fire department lieutenant eligibility test results. In closed session, the committee viewed the fire department lieutenant eligibility test results. The committee will go, the committee will, item four, the committee will vote to go into open session and may verify the lieutenant test HR results. It was moved by ZERFLU, seconded by Koth, to go into open session. Motion carried unanimously. In open session, it was moved by ZERFLU and seconded by Koth to verify the fire department lieutenant eligibility list test results. Motion carried unanimously. Item five was to adjourn. It was moved by ZERFLU and seconded by Koth to adjourn. Motion carried unanimously. The meeting adjourned at 3:45 PM. With that, I would look for adoption of the minutes.
We have a motion by Koth and a second by ZERFLU. Are there requests to speak? Signify, because it seems like we really aren't keeping the signal here tonight. I understand he's getting a replacement tomorrow. Quite, quite timing on this here deal. All right, are there requests to speak? Oh, sorry, we'll wait for the motion to get, and a second by ZERFLU. All right, move into requests to speak. Are there requests to speak? Human Resources Committee meeting held May 11th. See no requests to speak, please cast your ballots. Are these Duracell or are these Energizer Bunny batteries? What kind of batteries are we using here at the city? I know budgets are tight, but, there we go.
Motion carried, eight ayes, zero nays.
Thank you. Item 12, miscellaneous reports, Southwood County Airport Commission meeting held on April 5th. Item two, the McMillan Library Board of Trustees meeting held on March 21st. Item three, the Police and Fire Commission meeting held on April 11th. Item four, the Park and Rec Commission meeting held on March 14th. Item five, the Fire Department monthly update for April. Item six, the Water Works and Lighting Commission meetings held on April 11th and April 24th. Item seven, the Wastewater Treatment Commission meetings held on April 4th and May 2nd. Councilmembers, what do you wish is regarding those reports?
Make a motion to accept the balance of the reports.
Motion by Koth, is there a second? Second by ZERFLU. Move into discussion, are there any requests to speak? See no requests to speak, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, eight ayes, zero nays.
Item 13, referral of communication to committees. Alderperson ZERFLU.
I have a referral for the parked vehicle code, is it 910? Does that sound right? Just to be addressed, maybe cleaned up. I've gotten several complaints over the past couple of years, and it was recently brought to my attention that maybe that particular ordinance might need a little attention.
And is that a referral to a committee?
I believe property and finance. Does that sound right? Okay, thank you.
Alderperson Kubashak, you're next. I always forget, first and next, sorry. One of you two, whoever wants to go first. Alderperson Blazer, you're next.
Okay. I guess maybe as for the city attorney too, do we need to actually maybe start looking at having a legislative committee? Or, so we don't need to spend 40, 45 minutes talking about drug paraphernalia at council meeting? If we can kind of try to get something a little bit more affirmed up before it comes to us?
Right, either that or, say, such and such committee is now, you know, like, finance is also the legislative committee or something like that.
Something along that lines, just so we can have this big hash-out, head a committee, and hopefully be a little further narrowed in by the time it comes to us.
And perhaps the referrals to the committee whole, too, right? If they're kind of a broader concern issue. Alderperson Kubashak, you're next.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. I don't really have a referral per se, but what I have is a potential of moving June's meeting from the third week Tuesday to the fourth week Tuesday. I have a scheduling conflict myself. Interestingly enough, I got into a doctoral program, and the residency is actually that week. And I thought that it was going to be closer. It's in Land O' Lakes, and it's one case where I can't even leave because of the actual curriculum itself. I can't leave and come down here and come back. And without wielding my power, it isn't absolutely clear whether the council president can move a meeting for my own purposes, the way that the ordinance suggests, is that if it's, if there's a public interest involved with it. I can kind of make an argument for a public interest in terms of the council president wanting to be at the committee meeting. But again, what I'm going to do is not interpret it as a strict, I guess, power of mine. I wanted to leave it open on the floor. If people on this council agree that we can shift it from the third week in June to the fourth week in June, I would really appreciate it, but I'll let the body kind of decide that. But I think that we potentially need to decide that informally tonight before we leave, because we do have a public notice that needs to go out specifically for the zoning rewrite. And there'd have to be a change on the Plan Commission agenda next time to reschedule it, because the notes did indicate the third week in June is when the Plan Commission would meet with the full city council for that public hearing, which are simple things that can be conducted. But again, I want to give everybody the ability to decide whether we change it or not.
So, the ordinance, and I just want the clerk to clarify the ordinance for everybody's benefit, what the state, what the ordinance states on that matter.
Okay, so, I did have the ordinance up before the computer troubles, but it's Chapter Two, it's 2.04, I believe, and the ordinance states, and we did just recently change it, but the ordinance states that the council president may change the date of a common council meeting if there is concerns that a quorum will not be present, or if the city interest requires it. That's, city interest requires, that's the exact verbiage associated with that ordinance.
So, the question is, we've got one member that indicated their inability to be at the, at the meeting. Are there other, is there a risk of a, lack of a quorum on the third Tuesday of the month? I know many of us, as was debated at that ordinance change, that there wouldn't, you know, there had to be a city interest at bay or a lack of quorum at the July, did I say June? I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Did I say, I may have said, so we're talking the fourth Tuesday in June? June, June. So, moving, are there other individuals that are unable to be at the June 19th meeting? Okay, I'm not hearing there's an issue of a quorum, and I guess I'm not, I'm understanding your concern, and is appearing by phone an option, since the body has informally allowed that in the past? I know it's not in our rules officially.
I tried to look into as much as I could, and the, the actual curriculum is educational sustainability, and it's a case where immersing ourselves in this residency, I believe, is the intent with it. And the reason why it's so, it's actually in Land O' Lakes, it's through the UW, University of Wisconsin Stevens Point, but it isn't going to be on campus. It's to be completely removed from society for a week. So I don't know if there is an option for myself to be able to be available by telephone, but I appreciate the option, Mr. Mayor.
I'm just curious on the quorum issue. Okay. Alderperson Graff, you're next.
I do have a question. It was from the powerpoint that we had tonight, which is Rob's rule of order to rescind the decision made on the planning, Public Works Committee, particularly on the May 14th meeting, number two.
That was the, sorry. I got a change order?
Yep.
Item two, two C, C2. There's been a motion to rescind, right? That was your motion to reconsider? Sorry, the motion to reconsider? By Graff, that particular item, 11C2. Is there a second? Second by ZERFLU? We'll move into discussion. Oh, sorry. Thank you. So now, we're going to take a, take a vote to decide whether or not we're going to reconsider the item. She's going to check the number of votes it requires to pass. So, if the clerk could get the system, it's a motion, no, it's a motion to reconsider Okay, well, everyone's understood of the vote, or the, okay, we'll go into discussion. Sorry, Alderperson Blazer.
I just want to ask Mr. Graff if he has some new additional information he wants to add to the discussion, or?
Yeah, my main reason is, is because, you know, typically, we're looking at the fact that our committee can't meet, and that we're going to incur costs because of it. We did core samples on the job site that did not find that rocks were underneath the building that we were going to put up on the West Side Lift Station. Is that correct?
No, just not at the depth that was found in, during the excavation process. The core samples did indicate rock, just at a different depth. It was at an unexpected depth.
Just as a point of order, we're just checking on them, make sure that, because you voted in the negative on that item, just to make sure that it.
Do you want to change your vote?
Do you want to change your vote?
Right, I think a reconsider, you have, you have to, you want to change your vote, but rescind, renew.
In the same meeting, but do you want to change your vote from the way you voted on it originally?
Right, okay, I thought you were trying to do that.
Yeah, oh, okay. Okay, so, motion, I, okay, when you said motion, it threw me off. Okay, all right, all right, all right. We're on the same page. So, you want that to appear at the, you want to refer that to Public Works for the change order policy? Is that what I'm understanding? You're talking about the policy, though, the change order policy as was approved, or the, okay, so it wouldn't be related necessarily to the project, but the change order, you want to make a referral to review the change order policy? Okay, very good. All right, now we're understood. Thank you. Alderperson Blazer, did you have another referral communications? I'm going to add one, I'm going to refer, oh, Alderperson ZERFLU.
Just looking around, I think I might not be the only one who might need a little clarification on this motion.
There is no motion. The motion, there was no motion on the floor. It was a referral, referral of a motion.
Very good, thank you.
Blazer, you had nothing? Okay, all right. I'm going to make a referral to the Finance and Property Committee to consider, something I get calls on semi-ininfrequently, but to consider a change of the ordinance for the sale of beer from 9:00 PM to 10:00 PM in the city limits. And see no further requests to speak, or requests or referral communications, we're going to move into adjournment. Entertained a motion to adjourn. Alderperson Kubashak, oh, was there a? That's what I'm understanding, there wasn't any, any issue of quorum. Is that everybody's understanding? Okay. Okay, entertained a motion to adjourn. We got a motion by ZERFLU, is there a second? Second by Koth, all in favor? Any opposed, we stand adjourned. Thank you all for your being here, and have a good rest of your evening.